The Corder Madera Town Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd is now in session. Will you please call the roll, Rebecca?
Councilmember Bailey. Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Here.
Councilmember Avasio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Here.
Mayor Andrews.
Here. The first item is open time for public comment.
Pledge of allegiance.
I'm sorry?
Pledge of allegiance.
Oh, thank you. Pledge of allegiance, sorry.
You just in time, Sloane.
Just made it.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you roll call already?
Yes, we did.
You just did it. You just missed it? Okay. I'm still here.
No, you're absent.
Can we note that Sloane Bailey's here?
Sloane Bailey arrived at 6:32.
Okay.
Couldn't give me one minute?
Sorry. He's late. But we got you a big popcorn bar. Okay, the first item will be open time for public comment. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the mayor. The public will be given the opportunity to speak on any item not on the agenda. So, please go ahead and line up. Okay. Good.
Good evening. My name is Hildy Simon and I live at 5156 Paradise Drive, Corder Madera. I'm here tonight to keep the town council and my fellow citizens apprised of the five-year remodel project next door to us at 5148 Paradise Drive. Since I spoke last month, the project has finished the noisy and dirty paving of the exterior of the property and the railings on two decks are up. This is the good news. The bad news is that the exterior facade and interior of the first floor is not finished. The second-story deck is not finished. The fence between us remains in shoddy, derelict condition. The pool repair has not even begun and the permit was issued six months ago. Any work next door proceeds at a snail's pace. We are getting close to this becoming a six-year project. We feel very discouraged. But it isn't enough that the project has taken five years and isn't finished. There are still unaddressed issues such as fencing, exterior lighting, and landscape to solve. Due to my time limit, I will confine my comments this month to landscaping. I read a piece in the IJ this morning that Corder Madera wants to fight climate change. That is nice, but it does not jibe with the planning department's failure to deal with the landscaping next door. As it is, the project has removed a vigorous 30-foot hedge in the driveway that provided shade, habitat, and privacy. It has removed four big planters, a mature plum tree and other shrubbery. Backyard is now a completely unmitigated 60-foot expanse of paving, 30 to 40 feet wide, extending to a widened driveway with no new planting. If it and the driveway will reflect heat three-fourths of the year, how can you permit a tear-down remodel with no landscape review? I am here to remind the council that actions speak louder than words as they launch their campaign to address climate change. Again, the landscape is just one of other problems that we don't have time for here tonight. The big picture is that something has obviously gone wrong here. I believe the town owes us all an explanation of how this project has caused so many problems. I believe the council needs to adopt appropriate ordinances and the planning department needs to implement new rules to ensure that a five-year remodel doesn't happen again. Finally, I would like continued guidance from the town as to what they can do to bring this nightmare to a close. It has been nearly six years, for goodness sake. To my fellow citizens, if any of your neighbors are replanning or remodeling, I highly suggest that you run and not walk to the planners in this town to demand that landscaping and fencing will be reviewed, that exterior lighting is not intrusive, and that there is a time limit on permits. As it stands now, these items are weirdly not considered part of their permit process for this project. It is not fair to affected neighbors and it needs to change. See you in January. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I know that we are not allowed to discuss any open-time things that are not on our agenda, but is it appropriate to ask staff if there's any report at all or any update at all? Is that appropriate?
No.
Okay.
Would you be able to provide one at the next meeting if we put it on the agenda?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine, have been discussed previously, and do not require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, town staff, the public may request removal of an item for discussion. Okay. Any motions?
I'll move to approve items.
Public comment? Any public comments?
I'll move to approve item 4A through 4D.
Second?
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Andrews.
Yes. Next item is 5A, Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of Ordinance 990, I'm sorry, 990, repealing and reenacting and adding various chapters in Title 15 of the Municipal Code, adopting the 2019 California Building Standards Code, and setting a public hearing for adoption of the ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers.
I'm Brian Fenty, your building official. Tonight, we're conducting the public hearing and voting on the Ordinance 990 regarding that adoption of the 2019 California Building Standards Codes. The ordinance was introduced at a regular meeting of the town council on November 5th. At that time, a brief explanation was provided regarding the national code development process, the consensus voting by building and design professionals, and the state amendment and adoption of the model codes. With this ordinance, we are adopting the model codes as amended by the state of California to be effective January 1st in 2020. However, to further our commitment to climate action within the next 30 to 60 days, I will be returning to council with a separate ordinance to amend the Cal Green Code requiring even higher levels of conservation and sustainability. Those proposed Cal Green amendments will be in line with the Marin County Reach Codes that are being adopted by most North Bay cities. That's the short of my story, and I'd like to turn it over to council for the public hearing.
Can I just ask quickly, Brian? Thank you very much for your replies earlier today. I really, really appreciate it. Is there any way for you to summarize where other jurisdictions stand in that Reach Code process now?
I don't have all the facts on that. I would say that some have adopted those codes and others are still discussing it and considering it.
Has anybody balked and refused to?
Not that I've heard.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Any comments from the public? Any motions?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Ordinance Number 990, repealing, reenacting, and adding various chapters in Title 15 of the Municipal Code, adopting the 2019 California Building Standards Code, and waive the second reading of that ordinance so we could adopt it right away. Is that acceptable?
Or is this the second reading?
Yes, this is the second reading.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Andrews.
Yes. The next item is 5B, Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of Ordinance 991, repealing and reenacting Chapter 1502 of the Muni Code, adopting the 2019 Fire Code, the 2018 International Fire Code, and Appendix A of the International Wildland Urban Interface Code with local amendments.
Good evening, Mayor Andrews, members of the council. My name is Ruben Martin, Fire Marshal at the Central Marin Fire Department. We are here this evening for the second reading and the public hearing for adopting Ordinance 991, which will amend or actually repeal current 99 Ordinance for the existing Fire Code and adopt the new 2019 California Fire Code, which is based off the 2018 International Fire Code, along with Appendix A of the International Wildland Urban Interface Code. On November 5th, as you recall, we brought forward to you Ordinance 991 and the first reading of the ordinance and presented how the code adoption process goes through the state of California and is then amended by local municipalities based on local findings. At this point, I'd like to open it up to any public comments or to the council.
Questions?
No questions.
I have a question. I'm looking at page 13, section 503, dot 2, dot 1 of Chapter 5 is amended to read, "Dimensions: Fire apparatus access roads shall have an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet exclusive of shoulders." How many of our roads meet that criteria?
I would say it's the Bayside of Corder Madera and maybe some areas of Chapman Park. Unfortunately, some of the areas up on Christmas Tree Hill, the way we describe in the fire service, were basically designed for supporting local vacation cabins and were never designed to proper DOT and current standards. So, we find that not only within our jurisdiction, but throughout the entire county of Marin, where we find several roads that are too narrow to be able to handle the amount of traffic that we pass through every day.
Okay. Up in Chapman Park, most of, many of those roads fit that same criteria?
Yeah, so a lot of them will fit that same criteria of less than 20 feet. The roadways that are easily identifiable that are 20 feet or greater, especially on some of these mountainous communities that we have, is examples up on Christmas Tree Hill where we've got painted-in parking boxes. That's where we've identified roadways that are barely 20 feet and where we can squeeze a parking spot in. And so, if you do not have a 20-foot roadway and there is no parking box there, then theoretically you're not supposed to be parking.
Should we do the same thing over in Chapman?
I strongly recommend that, and it's something that I'm probably going to sit down with our public works department and start those discussions on identifying roadways that are narrow.
Okay. Any additional questions? Any public comment? Okay. Any motions?
I'll move to adopt Ordinance Number 991, repealing and reenacting Chapter 15.02 of the Municipal Code, adopting the 2019 California Fire Code, the 2018 International Fire Code, and Appendix A of the International Wildland Urban Interface Code.
Second.
Local amendments.
Oh, sorry. Second. Sorry. Okay. The next item is 5, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Andrews.
Yes. Okay. The next item is 5C, and I believe the council's...
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this. I have a conflict of interest as I have a business that sells prefab ADUs, so I'm going to leave the chamber.
All right.
And, Mr. Mayor, while I do not feel as though I have a conflict, I've been advised by council to the council, Council SEL to the council, CIL, that by virtue of my living on Christmas Tree Hill, which is mentioned in this statute, that I should also, for benefit of the doubt, recuse myself, even though I am not happy about it.
I wish I could stay. Adam?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Andrews, member of the council. My name is Martha Battaglia, and I'm with the planning department. This evening, you will be considering introducing Ordinance Number 992 to repeal and replace Chapter 1831 and to amend Chapters 1804, 1818, and 1820 related to accessory dwelling units. You will also be considering approving a resolution to amend the Town of Corder Madera master fee schedule. And I'd like to point out that the town received a comment letter today. Copies have been provided to you and are also in the back of the room for members of the audience. ADUs have been discussed at several town council and planning commission meetings in recent years. And in 2016, in response to state legislation at the time, the town council adopted substantial amendments to the town's ADU regulations. Most recently, in May and August of this year, the planning commission discussed proposed ordinance amendments, and the town had embarked on the mission of amending our ADU ordinance before the most recent state legislation. And as part of that process, the planning commission provided feedback to staff on issues such as height, size, and parking. And these meetings were attended by approximately 10 to 15 people who provided comments on the proposed ordinance amendments, and all the comments that we received are included in the planning commission minutes, which are an attachment to the staff report. And on October 22nd, the planning commission conducted a public hearing and adopted a resolution recommending that the town council repeal and replace Chapter 1831 and amend Chapters 1804, 1818, and 1820. And as part of that, the planning commission proposed three modifications to the version of the ordinance that they reviewed. The first was to modify the size of the ADUs to be consistent with state law. The version that the planning commission considered had a recommendation for 950 square feet for a studio or one bedroom and 1,000 square feet for a two-bedroom, and also allowed a 1,200-square-foot ADU on parcels that were greater than an acre. And the commission recommended that we just follow what was in the new state law, which is 850 square feet for a one-bedroom and 1,000 square feet for a two-bedroom. Additionally, the commission recommended that the discretionary design review options that were included in the ordinance related to size and height and also windows be removed, and also recommended the addition of a development standard to limit grading associated with the construction of an ADU. This list is included as an attachment to your staff report, and it shows all of the ADUs that have been submitted in Corder Madera since 2017, which is when our current ordinance took effect. So, there have been a total of 29 ADUs that have been submitted, which include the eight ADUs that are a part of the Preserves Project, and 28 of these ADUs have been approved, and one is currently under review by the planning department. And the ADUs include a mix of new detached structures. Some of these are above garages, and they also include the conversion of existing spaces, including basements and accessory structures. And the sizes range from 304 square feet being the smallest to 1,195 square feet being the largest. And the current ordinance allows for a maximum size of 1,200 square feet. I've included some pictures of ADUs that have been constructed or approved, and there is an attachment to your staff report. It's Attachment 5, which includes some additional pictures of these ADUs. On the upper left-hand corner is an ADU on Sausalito Street. This was the conversion of a detached garage, and the size is just under 600 square feet and with a height of 13 feet. On the upper right-hand corner is on Oakdale Avenue. It was a garage that was partially converted. It has a size just over 500 square feet and a height of 12 feet. The bottom picture is on Buena Vista Avenue. This has been approved, but is not yet under construction, and the size is 1,186 square feet with a height of 15 feet 6 inches. The picture on the left is on Fairview. This was office space over a detached garage that was converted to an ADU, and it's just the upper portion that was converted. It has a size of 484 square feet and a height of 24 feet. On the upper right is an ADU on Montecito, and this was a new garage with the ADU above it. It has a size of 725 square feet and a height of 22 feet 8 inches. And on the lower, the lower picture is on Golden Hind. This has been approved, but is not yet under construction, and it is an ADU located above a garage. The size of the ADU is 820 square feet and the height is 22 feet. This year, the governor signed 18 bills that were designed to remove barriers and to boost housing production. And of those six, six were designed to eliminate barriers to the production of ADUs. And I've highlighted Assembly Bill 881. This is the legislation that requires the most changes to our ordinance, and this is also included as an attachment to your packet as well. So, there are many changes that are necessary to the town's current ordinance in order to comply with new state law. The accessory dwelling unit ordinance establishes two different processes for how ADUs are reviewed. The first would be through an ADU permit, and this is the process in our current ordinance. And an ADU permit would be for detached ADUs greater than 800 square feet and for attached ADUs. And both detached and attached ADUs add additional square footage. And with this process, there would be a courtesy notice mailed to everyone within 300 feet and then a 10-day comment period. The next process is for interior ADUs, junior accessory dwelling units, and detached ADUs less than 800 square feet. And for these types of ADUs, an individual would apply directly for a building permit. The next change modifies the required parking for an ADU from one parking space per bedroom to one parking space total. State law sets a maximum required parking space for an ADU of one space regardless of the number of bedrooms. And the ordinance includes instances when a parking space is not required. For example, if the ADU is located within a half-mile of transit, then you do not need to provide parking for the ADU. Other changes are proposed related to architectural compatibility. The ordinance removes existing design standards that cannot be determined objectively and instead adds objective standards such as height, size, landscaping, and parking. And deed restriction, the new state law precludes an agency from requiring owner occupancy requirement. So, our current ordinance requires that an individual reside in either the ADU or in the remaining portion of the residence, and under a new state law, this no longer applies and you can now rent out both the ADU and also the remaining portion of the residence. An owner occupancy requirement is still required for junior accessory dwelling units, so that has not changed. As I mentioned, the size in the new state law requires an 850-square-foot ADU for one bedroom and then 1,000 square feet for a two-bedroom. There's also an allowance for an 800-square-foot ADU, and this allows for an 800-square-foot either attached or detached ADU with a height of 16 feet and a four-foot side and rear yard setback. And this is required regardless of what an existing, your existing lot coverage or floor area may be. There's also a change to the replacement parking spaces when a garage or carport is converted to an ADU or demolished. Our current ordinance requires these parking spaces to be replaced elsewhere on the lot, and new state law precludes us from requiring these spaces be replaced. The changes also allow for ADUs on parcels with a multifamily building, and they also allow for potentially an ADU and a JADU on a parcel developed with a single-family residence. And essentially, you could have an ADU or a JADU within the existing single-family home, and then you're also allowed to have a detached ADU. And the detached ADU can be combined with the JADU located within the structure. So, you would never have a situation where you had an ADU within the house and a detached ADU. You can only have an ADU and a JADU, but not two ADUs. That's confusing.
Sorry, I got a quick question. Can you go back to that slide for a second? Number six, the setbacks, still has to comply with the front yard setback too, right?
Correct.
Okay. Great. Just wanted to ensure that, yes. Thank you.
Okay. There are also some changes necessary to our ordinance to clarify existing regulations. Several new definitions are being added to the ordinance, and one of the changes is our current ordinance defines the various definitions. For the definitions that are included in state law, we are now just referencing the government code, and this is beneficial for if the definition is changed down the road, we do not need to amend our ordinance to reflect that change. The changes also define an existing structure in Christmas Tree Hill. State law makes a distinction between the creation of an ADU within an existing structure and the creation of an ADU that is adding new square footage, so a attached or detached ADU. And pursuant to state law, a municipality must approve an application for a building permit to create an ADU located within an existing single-family home or an existing accessory structure. And this is required regardless of any locational requirements that may be in place to limit ADUs in a certain area. So, on Christmas Tree Hill, the number of ADUs is limited to 25, which is 10% of the overall units on the hill, and we're allowed to maintain those limitations for detached and attached ADUs, but not for an ADU created from this existing space, so within a basement or an accessory structure. So, the changes require that a new detached structure or a new addition be in existence for five years before that space would be considered existing and could therefore be converted to an ADU. The changes also establish a review of the record, and this creates a more functional process where the review would be done by the town manager or his or her designee, and the decision would be final. And it also establishes a fee of $300, and our, one of the changes is that our current, the fee schedule would need to be updated to include this fee for the administrative review. And lastly, there's a standard that it needs to comply with prior approvals. So, for instance, you could have a situation where a design review was approved that required trees to be planted in a certain location in order for the findings to be made, so an applicant could not come in and propose to remove that tree and construct the ADU unless they first got discretionary approval to do so. Okay, there are also a couple of changes proposed related to policy amendments. Our current ordinance allows the height to be what is allowed by the underlying zoning districts. So, the most, our one is the most residential, the most residential parcels in town, and that has a height of 30 feet. So, based on discussions with the planning commission, we're proposing to reduce the height to 16 feet for attached or detached ADUs, and again, this is consistent with state laws as well, and then to reduce the height for an attached or detached ADU to 25 feet if it's located above an existing or proposed garage. Changes are also proposed related to the location of where parking space would be required when a space is required. So, our current ordinance allows for the parking space to be located in the front setback between the driveway and the closest side property, and the picture on the upper right shows that situation. So, we're proposing that this may be maintained in the new ordinance, and also adding that the ADU parking space could also be located on the driveway, even if the driveway is located in a front setback. And currently, in order to locate a parking space in the front setback, you would need to obtain a variance. Amendments to Chapters 1804, 1818, and 1820 are also required to ensure internal consistency within the zoning ordinance. In Chapter 1804, the terms accessory dwelling unit and junior accessory dwelling unit would be amended to reference the applicable government code. In Chapter 1818, the special purpose overlay district, certain sections of the Christmas Tree Hill overlay district would be amended. The term additional dwelling unit would be revised to accessory dwelling unit, and it also clarifies that interior ADUs and JADUs are not included in the maximum number allowed in per-capacity district. And in 1820, off-street parking and loading, the ADU parking standards included in 1820 would be removed, and instead it would reference Chapter 1831. And staff recommends that the town council introduce Ordinance Number 992 to repeal and replace Chapter 1831 and to amend Chapters 1804 definitions, 1818 special purpose overlay districts, and 1820 off-street parking and loading related to accessory dwelling units, and also to adopt Resolution Number 5129 to amend the Town of Corder Madera fee schedule by adding a fee for the administrative review process proposed in Chapter 1831. And there are some additional options available to the council, which are outlined in your staff report as well. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions?
Hi, thank you. I had a question about a recommendation the planning commission was to add a develop, well, let me, let me back up. Can you define for me the difference between a development standard and a design standard? Because my understanding is a design standard is prohibited by the changes to the state law, but a development standard is a permissible limitation the town can impose.
Correct.
And then, there's some sort of reference to the objective, the objectivity of the standard, but it wasn't perfectly clear to me.
So, the review of ADUs, it's a ministerial action, so you can't have any subjectivity when you're reviewing an application for an ADU. So, any standards that you're evaluating it by need to be objective, so very black and white. So the review of ADUs, it's a ministerial action, so you can't have any subjectivity when you're reviewing an application for an ADU. So any standards that you're evaluating it by need to be objective, so very black and white. And so we've designed standards that remove any subjectivity from the review process.
Yeah, and I think to some degree that design and development standards are used interchangeably, so like, we prefer to a height restriction as both a development standard, but it also relates to design in a way, meaning that you can't...
But the concept before us tonight is to not have any design review and to have a purely development review, if you will, development standard, no designs, okay.
Required, but yeah, that's correct. You cannot have a discretionary, like, a design review process, which we have for normal projects of sizes such as this.
And the, but the reason I ask that foundational question is because the planning commission recommended a development standard to limit the site grading, and then I did, if it was in there, just, did you include that in the, I saw it in the staff report, but then I didn't see whether it made it into the ordinance.
Yeah, so it is in the ordinance.
Okay.
So it is on page 24, and it's section 1831-080, which is the section for development standards for ADUs, and it is standard number 10. And the standard states, "Site grading associated with the construction of an ADU, including associated site work, shall not exceed 50% of the volume of the structure. The volume of the structure shall not include area above the height of perimeter walls, such as the volume of attic spaces associated with a pitched roof."
Would you mind just explaining that to me?
We actually have one of our planning commissioners in the audience who can correct me. So essentially...
Peter, I'm sorry. I did my homework, and then I didn't understand what the hell I was reading, so I'm asking...
So the best thing to imagine is a square box, and essentially, if you cut a line down the middle of that box, the amount of grading can't be more than 50% of what that overall volume is.
So the amount of earth that you're changing cannot exceed half the volume if you were to fill it up, the new structure, is that right? And this really only applies to hillside development?
Exactly, cutting into a hillside.
Okay, I understand, sorry. Thank you, those are my questions.
I have a question. Earlier tonight, I asked about roadway and fire equipment access, and it had to be 20 feet free and clear in front of the house. Where does that come into your approval and evaluation of this?
So on Christmas Tree Hill, which doesn't...
No, I'm talking about Chapman Park.
So there's nothing in the ordinance relating to widths of streets?
So one is, you know, this was an iterative process with the planning commission, so there was many meetings. There is nothing inherently unsafe in staff's view of that would make that one particular criteria mean that ADUs were not appropriate for certain areas of town that may have that condition out in front of their street. It's possible that there may be some areas of town where that exists, but as a general rule, given that there are other existing homes, plenty of existing homes on streets such as that, it did not rise to the level of sort of a safety issue that would be the only reason why we could exclude ADUs in certain parts of town based on an issue like that.
Okay, so, let me see if I, we've got roughly 4,500 houses in town, of which roughly 2,500 are down in the floodplains, in 2,000 are in the fire district, and between the primary unit, the ADU unit, and junior ADU units, instead of having 2,000 people living on those hills, we could have 6,000 households up there, okay? Where the roads are inadequate now, and you just want to sign off on them ministerially.
One is the state law requires that we sign off on them if they're allowed in certain areas of town, so it's not that we are saying we should be doing this necessarily. I also think there are existing units, I don't quite see the extrapolation for that population growth associated with this. You know, we've seen the number of units that we've been developing since 2017, 29 units over the course of the last three years with this legislation. Many have been in areas around town, whether it was an ADU or an expanding family that could have had increased population associated with it. So, you know, I think making that, you know, population growth projection based on just the fact that a new household could be there, it could be a very small unit with one person, which is no different than if somebody expanded their house and had another bedroom on their house with an additional child or something like that. So it's not necessarily clear to me at this time whether or not that would lead to a situation where by increasing a population to that extent could create safety concerns. That said, if we wanted to look at that in more detail and sort of think about what safety concerns might result, and when those thresholds might be reached, that's something that staff could definitely do. And it was discussed during the process with respect to Hidden Valley. There was a public comment about, what about that neighborhood shouldn't be treated like Christmas Tree Hill? And that email was circulated, sent to us, and circulated, I think, by one of the homeowners in that area, sent to us, and I think CC'd a bunch of other homeowners in that area as well. And frankly, a couple of the comments that came back were, we don't want the restriction in our area, we want to be able to address the housing issues in Hidden Valley and in the state, and this is a good way to do that, and we want to be able to do ADUs. You know, I think there are a lot of different factors to look at from a public safety standpoint, and it would take some time to really think about what are the criteria for a public safety finding? And, you know, staff would want to spend some time thinking about it, and I think just focusing on a street width would sort of put a lot of existing homes and a lot of existing development that may want to occur in the same category as, you know, a public safety hazard or risk. And so, but like I said, that's something that could be done. We do have the ability to designate areas of town that may not have certain types of ADUs. There are other areas of town that, or other types of ADUs that are required to be allowed no matter where they are in town or townwide. And that's sort of a distinction that applies right now for interior ADUs. So if somebody wants to make an interior ADU, that has to be allowed everywhere in town. And there's even some discussion that we're currently trying to get a hold on the exact meaning of the state law regarding these detached 800-square-foot ADUs, whether or not those have to be allowed everywhere in town as well. So even if we were to go that route, we would catch certain types of ADUs, but not necessarily all.
And I'm not so much focusing on ADUs, I'm talking about increased development up in the hillsides where the roads are already inadequate. And, you know, I know down in, I guess it's San Diego, they require turnouts every 400 feet on streets. Do we need to start doing that? You know, and particularly, I'm thinking if you, Upper Chapman, when you say 12 feet wide for parking, I really don't think we should be encouraging additional development up there until we figure out the access. Maybe we need to make it a one-way road, I don't know. You know, it's sort of, all this planning, access, egress, and for fire equipment and for population, I don't see that being put front and center. Instead, it's sort of like, what will the building look like, what will its size be, as opposed to how wide is the street in front of the house if we're going to allow folks to park in front of the house?
Right, and I think there are, to your point about the turnouts, I know, for example, I think that is required in certain areas of San Anselmo, I've seen, but it applies across the board to any development, whether it's an ADU, or whether it's a new home, or whether it's something else. So I think that could be evaluated in conjunction with the public works team, the fire department, and so on, if that needs to be a policy for any type of new development or addition in certain streets and hillsides. But to limit it to particularly an ADUs in this particular case, it didn't, we didn't think that was an appropriate way to handle that issue.
When do you plan on addressing it?
We don't have anything at the moment, but this is the first I'm really hearing of those concerns.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I had a question. The minimum rental period on these is 30 days?
Correct.
Okay. How do we enforce that and make sure that happens? Because I happen to know, one of the units you showed is being used as a vacation unit exclusively, so how do we ensure that this actually gets used for housing, which is why we're doing this?
So it's based on complaint basis, so if the town received a complaint that someone was renting it out for short-term rentals, then we would investigate. There is also a requirement in the draft ordinance that homeowners fill out surveys, so that would be a way to determine how the unit is being used, who it's being rented to, that sort of thing.
But it's complaint-driven?
It's complaint-driven.
If there's a vacation rental unit.
And some of them, in the last three years, if it was developed, there's actually part of the deed restriction recorded with the county would have had that requirement in it. So it, you know, that's just...
The requirement that it can't be used?
It can't be rented for less than 30 days. So it depends, some of them, that was something that was added in 2016. You know, it's actually not in the current ordinance, although it's, I mean, sorry, not in, the requirement for the deed restriction is not in the current ordinance, although the requirement that it not be rented for less than 30 days is obviously still in there. But it is complaint-based, we have investigated a couple of short-term rentals or proposed short-term rentals. It's not an easy thing necessarily to investigate, but we do it.
Should it be a deed restriction?
Some of the comments, and Martha can speak to this more, but we had at the planning commission several members of the public really concerned about deed restrictions. At the time, there was concerns about deed restrictions for, that would require the owner to live in one of the units, and the deed restriction also applied to this short-term rental. Since that time, the state has taken away our ability to actually require deed restrictions for the owner occupancy part of this. But there were several members of the public who expressed real concerns in that it was a significant burden to have property owners go through the deed restriction process as it created a sort of an encumbrance or a dark, you know, some sort of blemish on the, on sort of when they were going to sell it or buy, whatever it was, but it was something that was cumbersome and burdensome to property owners. And so I think in hearing that, the planning commission, one, in recognition of the fact that the state law took away the ability to do that with respect to owner occupancy, also felt that it wasn't necessary to do that, given that, frankly, that provision is applied all throughout the town. I mean, it's sort of not explicit the way it is here for ADUs, but short-term rentals are not through the permissive policies, permissive zoning code policies of our ordinance, it's not permitted anywhere in town, so it's consistent with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any public comment?
I have a comment.
Please, and line up if you...
Okay.
Norma Axton, Harbor Drive, Cortumadera. A lot of people here are quite young comparatively, and I'm wondering how many of us are remembering Oakland Hills, and if any of you have been up in Megalia or Paradise? You know, and I'm seeing a lot of, I have been in all those places, and I'm seeing a lot of the same roads in our own communities here, be it Cortumadera, Larkspur, whatever. And just moving around the town tonight, just going from here to Highway 101 was a nightmare. So if we have a major fire, earthquake, whatever, how are people moving? We're going to have another thing, and if TAM goes up, it's going to make Oakland Hills look like nothing. So that's where you need to think about the roads, and you're right about the roads. I agree. That's all.
Anyone else?
Just to have a couple of... Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Len Rifkind, I represent Henning Cather at 10 Enterprise Drive, and I was very interested in hearing the couple of questions that council members asked. Number one, Mr. Bailey asked about development versus design, and the mayor asked about basically safety issues. And so what I'm here to talk about is the concern of one of the standards, the clerestory windows, and I think it applies directly to those two issues. I think clerestory windows and item 10, I'll direct your attention to page 24 of the staff report, section 9A and B of the ordinance. And so, at least regarding, I think that clerestory windows is a design issue, it's right up there with, and in my view, it, as I'm going to discuss here in a second, violates code requirements, and two, it doesn't comply with the state law. And regarding what the mayor was concerned about, safety, again, the code requirements, and let's talk about that. The problem with clerestory windows is, as the code section says, it has to be 6 feet, 6 and 1/2 feet above the ground or the level, so the sill level's at 77 inches, and so perhaps the city manager's the only person in the room that probably could reach that and be able to climb out. I certainly would perish in a fire if I was in a room with clerestory windows. And so the point is, is that California Residential Building Code section, R310, states, and I quote, "Every sleeping room shall have not less than one operable emergency escape and rescue opening." If you have a bedroom with a clerestory window in it, that is not something that's safe that you can exit from. In fact, R310-2.2 says the sill height can't be more than 44 inches. So there's a 30-inch variance between clerestory window in your code and what the California Residential Building Code requires. And I did happen to notice you all just adopted a whole bunch of codes just before this, so you do care about the codes, and this is one code that your ordinance that you're proposing to adopt tonight does not comply with. And then what I also want to point out is, is I think that this section that I just, that we're talking about, 18.31.080, 9A and B, and I say I have 30 seconds left, so I'm going to talk quickly, it doesn't comply with the state ordinance. Why not? Well, your staff has attached the state ordinance, and so A6 on page 57 of your staff report, that says that, under A6, that's the maximum standards that you can use, is set forth in the ordinance. And what are those standards? Well, I'll list them briefly, and Mr. Mayor, I see I'm running out, may I have 30 more seconds?
Okay.
You're a generous man, thank you. Okay, so the standards under the state ordinance are B, time limits, C, size, D, parking, E, ministerial approval, F, fees, G, local agencies can make restrictions less restrictive, and H is submit to HCD. My point is, is nowhere in the state law does it permit you to have an ordinance that will require clerestory windows. So I think for those reasons, I urge you to reconsider standard 9, it's really a design review standard. Thank you.
Excuse me, before you leave, Mr. Mayor, may I ask you a question? Is it possible, Len, to reconcile, first of all, do you agree with... Is it possible, Len, to reconcile, first of all, do you agree with the distinction between a development standard and a design standard? Are development standards okay and design standards not okay?
Yeah, I think that's planning speak, and it's over my pay grade, I'll leave that to Adam over there. But I think the point is, here is, is that the purpose and the goal of what the state and the governor's trying to accomplish is to get more housing. Legitimately, you want to have more safety, but every time you put a design or a development standard in, it makes it harder to develop one of these ADUs. And last time I checked, what color you make the glass or the way it looks, that seems pretty design-like versus a development standard. That's my answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any additional public comment?
Thank you. Louise Brown, representing myself and my husband, Brian Brown, and I have a letter that I intended to get to you in time for the package, that I just didn't get to Martha in time, so if you can indulge me with a little bit of extra time, I'd actually like to read the letter, and I can shorten it if you really want to keep me to my three minutes.
Can you shorten it?
I'll shorten it. I would like to just note that I think it's interesting that the California laws that we're talking about were debated and passed prior to the most recent really devastating fires in our state, and I think we need to keep that in mind. So I'm just going to read excerpts from the letter here. We moved to Christmas Tree Hill almost 17 years ago, and the first neighborhood meeting we went to was hosted by the fire chief. And he said to us, and I think we'd been living in the house for about a week, he said to us, "It's not a matter of if there's a fire in Christmas Tree Hill, it's a matter of when." And at the time, that really scared me, and now it terrifies me. I mean, given the recent fires that we've had in the state in very populous areas that have difficult egress and emergency access, Christmas Tree Hill is one of those areas that I think is particularly impacted, and we have a very thorough and thoughtful and careful analysis that was done to create an overlay district and regulations that I think we need to be really cognizant of. Any amendment to the ADU regulations in Corder Madara must continue to ensure that public safety is prioritized over a one-size-fits-all state mandate. And to that end, the maximum number of ADUs on Christmas Tree Hill must not exceed the current ceiling of 10% of the total number of primary residential units. There's vague language and loopholes that are still existing within the regulation as it's proposed, that will allow a preponderance or growth of population on the hill that I think is dangerous. So we therefore urge the town to adhere to the intent of the original overlay and prioritize public safety of residents. Specifically, we would encourage the town to make two revisions to the proposed ordinance 992 as follows. In subsection 1818410C, do not add language that specifically excludes interior accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units when calculating the maximum number of allowable units on Christmas Tree Hill. This is going to create an explosion, or at least a growth, of population on a hill where there is already a very impacted situation in terms of egress and entrance, and this is on a day-to-day basis. We're the first house on Summit Drive, anything further up from us, you can't pass, there's no ability for people to get in and out, even to get to school, so imagine a wildfire. The second area is in subsection 1831110, and the intention of creating a wait period, I think, for converting an attached space or detached space, if you could accommodate me just a couple more seconds?
Keep going.
Thank you. I think the five-year wait period is smart, because it keeps people from specifically building and then flipping to an ADU. However, in order to ensure really real clarity on this clause, we feel it's critical to expressly state that any application for conversion of space to an ADU after that five-year timeframe can only be considered if it complies within the constraints of the ordinance. In other words, that it not exceed the 10% allowable for ADUs on Christmas Tree Hill. The character of our community is in part shaped by the fragile balance that we have between development and nature, and we have so far planned and lived in ways that have avoided any sweeping tragedies. We must continue to ensure that the safety of Corder Madara residents is protected, even when that means that our town must push back on broad mandates from Sacramento. We should only do what is right, what is possible, what is safe, and what is sustainable.
Any additional comments?
Hi, I'm Phil Simon, for Simon Ranch Road in Corder Madara. In 2017, the town updated the ADU ordinance to allow 1,200 square-foot ADUs. Encouraged, the construction of such a unit made economic sense, I began planning for a project that would place a 1,200-square-foot ADU 60 feet from the 1,190-square-foot house I occupy on a 24,000-square-foot parcel. The parcel is bounded by open space and two other large parcels owned by my sister and me that have been in our family for over 80 years. I met many times with staff from planning, public works, and fire to ensure my conceptual design and planning efforts were viable. At the May 19th Planning Commission meeting, the commissioners expressed support for continuing to allow 1,200-square-foot ADUs by right on larger parcels. At the August 13th meeting, they expressed support of a two-tiered system proposed by staff whereby 1,200-square-foot ADUs could be approved on larger parcels through a discretionary design review process. So we were encouraged. The proposed project was in character with our rural property and over 400 feet from our nearest neighbor, who would view the new unit against a backdrop of mature trees. I was out of the country at the time of the October 22nd Planning Commission meeting, but I've watched the video of this meeting and cannot find a good reason why the commission reversed itself on the matter of discretionary review for ADU projects. Members admitted to a time crunch, and clearly there was no time for thoughtful consideration on the matter. And they did this after closing the period for public comment. My concern tonight is that the approval of this draft resolution with its recent changes is on a fast track without the benefit of adequate public scrutiny. What we would like to see is the provision for discretionary review reinstated. From my perspective, there's a second sticking point, the new language of 18.31.070, item eight. Since it requires that all ADUs connect with the district sewer system, as far as I can determine, it targets only our project. We're not sanitary district number two. Public Works staff has told me for the past six months, we need to connect to the sanitary district two sewers citing county rules. I came back to them many times, showing staff why state and local rules, rather than county rules, apply to sewer connection for our project. Finally, in September, I was directed by staff to the county with whom the town had struck a deal in 1974 to assume responsibility for sanitation issues. After a month of correspondence, today, the county director of environmental services agreed with me that we do not need to connect, as our parcel does not abut the sewer per state law. Can I just wrap it up?
Okay.
The latest aerobic treatment technology, using the latest aerobic treatment technology, we can produce a higher quality effluent than the district dumps into the bay via CMSA. I ask that this hastily inserted language come out. And in closing, I want to say that it's our hope that the council will respect our longtime guardianship of this last remaining rural enclave in the town, and make a determination here in favor of our frankly modest request for the fair review process that would consider our exceptional circumstances. The spirit of allowing ADUs is to encourage and hasten their building, but we seem to be meeting a lot of resistance. You know, we're all in this together, we all want to see these units built, don't rush this through, please hold it out.
Okay. Any comments? Any further public comment? I guess we're done? You know, close public comment? I don't see any more public. All right, so.
May I ask some questions of staff?
Sure.
So can somebody address this clerestory window issue, number one? Let me just ask you the three questions, and then, secondly, I don't know who could properly address it. Do we have any projection or expectation of what we anticipate the response to be once it's changed? In other words, are we thinking there'll be five units, there'll be 50 units, there'll be 500 units over the next decade or so? Have we done any analysis about what sort of response we expect in the world of ADUs or JADUs? And finally, I don't know, Adam, this is probably for you, but I have been approached by councils from other towns that are concerned about the upcoming regional housing needs allocation numbers. Some are apprehensive, it's as much as triple as what it was the last time when it was terrible for us. Can you speak to whether our proposal tonight addresses those issues, or are they related or not?
So I'll start with the window. There's a standard related to a condition where you have an ADU that's located within 15 feet of a shared property line, so this could either be a side property line or a rear property line. So if the ADU is located within 15 feet, and there's a structure on the adjacent property that has windows on the elevation that faces the ADU, there's a development standard that the window be clerestory, so meaning it has to be at a height of six and a half feet. And so you can envision, you know, a structure obviously has four elevations, so at most, this standard would apply to two of the four elevations.
But the specific question is, do you have any sense about whether this issue has been passed or addressed in any other jurisdiction? Are we opening the town to a challenge that it is really a design standard and not a development standard? I get when you're describing, it sounds objective to me, but I lack the background to know whether this industry standard, if you will, is something that commonly falls within the design standard or development standard when analyzed under, well, I don't know, ordinance law, whatever that is.
Yeah, I haven't seen any standards similar to this. There are a lot of standards relating to the requirement to obscure glass or to locate-
And those are commonly considered development standards or design standards?
It's kind of semantics.
Oh, well, that was the question I was trying, distinction I'm trying to make, though.
As long as it's objective, it's allowed.
I see.
So it means that it has to be a black and white, does it meet this test or not? So in this case, it is, I think you're right, it relates to the design of that facade, but it's an objective standard saying that if somebody proposes something in this location, it's required to have this window. So it's an easy sort of determination, ministerial determination, whether or not it's required or not. I want to, I want to get to the background of this a little bit. One of the reasons why we put this in there, our current ordinance has a subjective standard related to privacy, and it talks about ADUs not being able to have windows that look, have a direct line of sight to another property's windows. And it's hard to make that subjective in our determination that was subjective, because from where, where's the line of sight, you know? The point was clearly to get at privacy concerns between ADUs and other properties that may currently exist. So rather than go with that subjective criteria, we thought this was a way objectively to address privacy concerns, which, as you know, in our discretionary processes comes up quite frequently related to when neighbors are adjacent to each other, or neighboring properties are adjacent to each other. So that's the why it's in there, and given the fact that state law requires us to allow ADUs within four feet of either a side yard or a rear yard property line, we felt that that was rather close and could be otherwise obtrusive or to, if there were regular-sized windows. I think we recognize, clearly recognize, the building code requirements that for bedroom windows, you have to have a minimum-sized window, and it has to be down at a certain height. This would require that those bedrooms be placed somewhere where the windows could be regular size in an ADU, so not against those walls. So you'd have other types of uses, whether it was a living room, the kitchen, or something else, could be adjacent to those facades that, where the clerestory window requirement would be located, and the bedrooms could be facing the other two sides or the other directions of the house. So hopefully that answers that question.
It does answer, yep. So number of units expected, and then finally RENA numbers, sorry, Jim.
Keep going. We're from the planning guy.
So it's hard to know for sure how many units this will result in. You know, we did see substantial changes to the ordinance in 2017, and since that time, there are about 30 units, so it hasn't been an explosion of units. And what we're finding, you know, people come to the counter and they ask questions about ADUs, and people use them for different things. It's very common to put aging parents in them, or children who have graduated and haven't, you know, found their own place. So it's not always, you know, a family or a lot of people that move in, sometimes it's just, it meets the needs of individuals. So I would anticipate there probably would be more of an uptick than what we've seen in the last three years, given that now you can do ADUs on these smaller lots, now that there's allowance for an 800-square-foot ADU with a four-foot side and rear yard setback. I would anticipate we probably would see more than the 30 we've seen in the last three years, but I wouldn't anticipate that, it would, it would be hundreds.
Over what period?
But also, you do not have to live in the main house anymore, so spec, I don't like to use this word, but speculators could buy the house with the intention of adding an ADU and just turn it into a duplex rental, or if they do a junior ADU, it's a triplex.
Yes, that would be possible. I do think it's important, I mean, there was a major change in 2016. It's, ADUs have been, and I would agree with Martha's assessment entirely, I mean, I do, but I just, the point being that there has been a major sort of push by those who are interested in ADUs in the last few years, given the changes that happened in 2016. It's been a ministerial process, by right process, since 2001, I should note, but I wouldn't expect drastically more numbers than we've seen in the last few years. It is hard to really-
Got it.
... understand exactly how this will play out until we see some evidence of it in the coming years. But to your, this sort of is a segue into your last question, which, you know, earlier this year, I think it was in March or April, we did come to you with the 2018 Housing Element Annual Report, which, at the time, I think I noted that all seven of our housing units, new housing units in 2018 were accessory dwelling units, and we, we were able to count those toward the low and moderate income affordable housing categories, which allowed us to maintain or keep up with our RENA requirements over the four-year period in which we are in, the cycle we're in. That had, you know, additional, additionally allowed us to sort of be excluded from some other state laws that require sort of by-right housing for multifamily housing and other things like that. So it does significantly, I would say, contribute to how we have in the past met our RENA obligations or goals, which are more and more becoming mandates and obligations with more serious repercussions, and I, and I would imagine it will be a significant part of how we meet it going forward. And I do also hear, like you have been hearing, that our numbers will become much greater in the coming cycle in 2020, I guess the '24 cycle, starting that eight-year period.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask one follow-up question? The question was really a little more subtle than that, which is, does the passing of the ordinance itself help us comply with like state mandates, or is it only the sort of practical consequence of whether more units are created that would address the RENA numbers?
Right, it's the latter.
Okay.
Got to get it built. Any comments, questions?
Can you talk about the Christmas Tree Hill issue a little bit more? There's so much going on in here and so many reports, I'm having a hard time keeping straight exactly where we are on this thing now, and I thought that was a really good point, and Jim's concerned about it, I know as well, but we really need to make sure we are not increasing density to the point where we're creating a public safety issue, and I just want to understand exactly what's going on in this.
Yep. So state law precludes us from limiting the number of ADUs that are created from existing spaces. So if someone converted a portion of their basement or an accessory structure to an ADU, there's nothing that would allow us to prevent that from happening. So that's very clear in the state statute. So our ordinance has been structured to be consistent with state law and to allow interior ADUs within Christmas Tree Hill, and then we- And then we are proposing a five-year limitation on any new detached structure or new attached structure. Because what, what could theoretically happen is someone could come in and do an addition or build a pool house, which is, wouldn't be subject to the locational requirements, the capacity of 25 total units on the hill. And then once that is built, they could then come in and apply to convert that existing space into an ADU because state law allows the conversion of existing spaces to ADU. So our attempt to close that loophole that currently exists in our ordinance was to establish the five-year period in which a new attached or detached structure would need to be in existence before you could convert it to, to an ADU.
Yeah, I would just, in response to Louise, Louise as well, you know, we've really tried, and this is part of it, to do everything we could to keep the original intent of the capacity limitations on Christmas Tree Hill to the extent we really felt we could legally and be consistent with state law.
And you think you've done that in this ordinance?
Yes, we think, we think, we think we've, we've done that. And, and yes, I would say the answer is yes. The five years, there were some questions about whether five years was the right period of time. That's similar to the time period we use for, for example, flood permits. You, you have to add the valuation, and I think it's sprinklers as well. But you add valuation over a period of five years, really with, as a disincentive for somebody just to, you know, basically sort of incrementally do additions without having to meet these enhanced requirements. So I think it's, it's a, it's a disincentive, the time period that's used in other statutes as well, and so we felt that was an appropriate time.
So the, the new state statute continues to allow jurisdictions some ability to limit ADUs in certain areas based on public safety concerns or traffic or sewage, water kinds of issues. That provision has not changed. To whether or not, given the findings that the council has made in the Christmas Tree Hill area, HCD determines that what we are trying to do by plugging essentially a loophole in allowing people, currently people can do in two steps what they can't just do in one step. And so if there is some question about whether we can impose that limitation, HCD will will surely tell us it's in the ordinance. HCD as a part of the new process will be reviewing the ordinance and will be giving us their determination about whether, to what extent our ordinance complies with the new state law. So I think that, you know, staff has really seen a loophole here where folks could pretty easily get around the cap. The cap is allowed under state law, and so we'll have to see what HCD has to say about it.
So you think this is the best solution to making sure that we prohibit overdensification of Christmas Tree Hill?
I, I think it is a one way to effectively limit or certainly significantly slow down getting around the capacity limitations. And so I think, you know, all the jurisdictions statewide are grappling with an issue of, you know, having to comply with state law. A lot of these statutes were just adopted, there's not a lot of guidance from HCD at this point. And so I think that staff and the planning commission have really come up with a recommendation here that thoughtfully plugs a loophole in an effort to try to really honor the findings that the council previously made and then we all continue to observe in terms of safety issues on the hill. So I think moving forward with this, and certainly HCD will let us know if they have a different view about whether this is something state law does not allow.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Did you have any or, did you have any or...
Well, I'm not going to vote in favor of this tonight, mainly because I have not seen the town explain to me how we're going to get the people off that hill. And I'm pointing to Chapman Park. There's been a lot of development there. If folks have to evacuate from Hidden Valley and so on, and the fire department wants to go up to fight a fire, I don't know how they're going to do that. Okay? Bob, your street, I don't know how you get a fire truck up when you want to get down.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
And I, I would really like to see somebody explain to me how that's going to be done or can be done. And I don't want to vote for anything that I think can increase density on either of these hills until let's sort it out.
Can I ask a question before you respond to that? Are we, okay, I'm, you've raised an issue I hadn't even considered here, Jim. I didn't realize we had this option. Doesn't state law kind of control what we do in that, let's say that we sort of impotently say, we're not going to pass this thing, are we nevertheless bound by state control? Or in fact, we enjoy some authority to elect not to comply with the state law?
Yes, state law goes into effect January 1st.
So, so what's the consequence of not approving this? How does it, how does it change us if we were to vote today not to approve the recommended changes?
So what you would have is you would, the new ordinance, the proposed ordinance, wouldn't, wouldn't ever go into effect unless you introduce it and then subsequently adopt it. You would have state law that would go into effect and would be in effect. We have a new, we have an old ordinance on the books. There would be some question about, to what extent do any of the provisions of that ordinance apply? Those issues are being discussed and grappled with HCD. But certainly the provisions that are clearly inconsistent with state law would no longer be able to be enforced. If you move this ordinance forward, you can also simultaneously ask staff to come back with an item for you to consider in terms of what you, what you would need to do to make the appropriate findings in other areas of the town to impose limitations like you've done in Christmas Tree Hill. That may require hiring a consultant. I suspect it would require consultation with your fire marshal, with other town staff. But there is no reason why you couldn't proceed with this ordinance and at the same time move forward with determining whether there are appropriate measures that should be taken and appropriate findings that could be made in order to limit ADUs in other areas of the town.
But if you, hang on, just a question first, Adam, or maybe, I don't know if it's for you, Teresa, or Adam. If we were to, just posing the hypothetical here, not to vote for this tonight, how would a proposed, somebody who wants to do an ADU in, on, I don't know, some part of the town, how is their life different if we don't pass this? In other words, are they, is it easier or harder for them to, to do the ADU?
I think it, every situation's a little bit different, but I think on the whole, it becomes easier. You don't, for two clear things, for example, you would not have, there would be no height restrictions. You'd use the underlying height to allow permitted an ADU of 30 feet in an R1 district. You would not have the closed loophole, for example, in Christmas Tree Hill that we just discussed, whereby, you know, we put in provisions to try to restore the original intent of that district.
Oh, and the five-year thing.
You wouldn't have any of the, you know, development standards. As we said, we had, our current ordinance has, whether or not that even would, could be used after January 1st is still an open question. But if we actually defaulted to state law, we would have none of the development standards that you see in the ordinance today for new ADUs. So there's a lot of things that I think would be, I guess, easier, by the way, less restrictive.
And the, the window issue that we've been discussing wouldn't go into place either. And so then you would end up, if we were in a situation where the current privacy standards, which are really objective, are subjective, are not valid under state law, we would not have any objective standard to replace them with.
Yeah, and the size limitation, 1,200 square feet would be the size somebody could build a 1,200 square foot ADU.
So if we do not introduce this and pass this, state law goes into effect, governs everything, and the things you're concerned about happen without us having any control over it.
So, so the concern on...
I'm just trying to clarify what you're, I understand your point, I agree with it, I'm just trying to...
But I just want to get that on the agenda.
Yeah, hi, RJ Suko, Director of Public Works. I just want to give a little response to some of the comments about access and evacuation routes, in particular for Christmas Tree Hill and Chapman. As part of the climate adaptation plan, we are looking at ideas and strategies to improve access routes. We'll be looking at, I think that's a great suggestion, the pullouts, improving our fire roads, which could also act as additional evacuation routes, possibly identifying some new connections to some of these arterial and collector roads to improve, you know, more areas to get in and out. Upper Chapman, as you know, is a narrow street, you know, we can look at opportunities to widen that so you get more than one car passing at one time. And so that's an ongoing effort, and we'll be having multiple public outreach events over the next year, and those ideas are all welcome.
So it'll be at least a year.
Correct.
Any further comments, questions? Can you talk about that issue with the 1,200-foot square unit? That's just...
That's the current max.
It sounds like you guys have been talking about it, so if you can just give us a little more perspective, that would be helpful.
The 1,200 square foot size?
Yeah, the question the gentleman had about...
His specific project. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Simons. Correct, yeah, actually, well, you know, I, I didn't, I wasn't aware that the recent change in size limitations was of particular concern to Mr. Simon until actually this evening, unless, I don't know if it wasn't raised to Martha as well. You know, we have had conversations, there's been a number of conversations about how to allow, and I think we all support this sort of type of development that Mr. Simon is proposing in terms of a more, a modest way of improving his property, which again has been, it's a very, very unique site in Corder Madera. A lot of it, the discussion frankly recently, and it's taken some time to just get, find resolution on, has been about utilities and sewage hookups and things like that. There's some very, also more, more unique things regarding that, that property with respect to sanitary District 2 and whatnot. So, you know, it, I, I agree, progress has been slow. As, as to that particular issue about the size, again, this is, this is not something that I was, was on our radar this evening. But it sounds like if he has today, he'd have ability under this, this ordinance, if it was a two-bedroom ADU, it could be a thousand square foot structure, rather than the 1,200 square foot, which is allowed pursuant to our current ordinance. And even in previous iterations, I think there was this discussion about either allowing, having sort of a cap at 1,000 square feet, but allowing larger parcels to go up to 1,200 through a discretionary process.
Right.
That was...
So there would be like a variance or something he could apply for because he's got an extra large lot.
Exactly. It would actually be a, like a design review. And, and that was, that was determined at the last...
So it wouldn't prevent him from building the 1,200 square feet?
Well, that's not in the current ordinance as drafted, but right, it wouldn't, if, if we had a sort of a two-tier process, that's what we had at one point in, in the summer in our draft ordinance with the planning commission, was sort of a two-tier structure where you could have a buy right, 1,000 square foot, and then up to 1,200 through a design review discretionary process.
Because I know we had an issue earlier last year with the 1,200 square foot ADU over on the Bayside in a residential neighborhood, and everyone thought it was too big and it was too large for a lot and everything else.
Correct.
And I'm sure that's one of the reasons why we're doing this, but I just want to make sure that there's an avenue for an extra large lot, you know, and a special parcel to get something over the 1,000 square feet approved.
And there currently...
It sounds like there is.
No, no, there currently is, is not in this draft of the, of the ordinance that is before you this evening. There was in the previous iteration in August, I believe, when we discussed, that, oh, that we went to the planning commission with in October. That was in the draft ordinance at that time, but after planning commission comments, it was removed. So it would be, if, if that was something that the council wanted to allow, would be some, an avenue to do that, it would, it would be more of a substantive change that I think would be, we would want to remand back to the planning commission.
I think, I think council could go forward with the amendment, and we, we have draft language here, so we could amend on the fly for you if, if you wanted to add that. I think the question is, do you want to go back to that two-tiered system where, or do you want to say if, if someone wants anything over the limitations of 850 or 1,000, they essentially have to go through design review? And we could just pick up on the same language.
Right.
So that's something you could, you could go ahead and introduce the ordinance with this amendment and still be on track for adoption at your next council meeting.
Which will be end of July, right, or end of January?
Correct.
I think because of a quorum issue on this item, we would, we would be at, at the second meeting in January. I think we have a quorum issue with the December meeting, and I think you just decided this evening not to have an early January meeting.
Okay. Okay. Well, I mean, let's get to it then, right? My own sense is that, sort of on balance, we're not helping the town by refusing to vote for it, so I'm, I'm inclined to kind of go with it, only because we are retaining some kind of control of some, we'll talk about amending it in some way, but just for the benefit of the town understands, we're under assault, if you will, from the state with an effort to assume control over the way we govern ourselves and the way we manage our own property. Land use is something which, there's a constant tension between what authority do we locally have to control the manner in which we develop ourselves, and to what extent is a state entitled to step in and dictate that to us? And it's not an easy battle because there are legitimate public policy reasons on all sides. However, I come down firmly on the side of we should decide what we like for ourselves. Here's an example of where the state has already stepped in repeatedly, and most recently with the latest updates that we're being asked to consider tonight, and which to my mind, don't give us a hell of a lot of wiggle room.
Right.
A little bit. And I think, and I appreciate very much Martha and Adam, you guys did a great job as usual about going through things and coming up with the idea. The planning commission, Peter, thank you, and all your people for taking the time to go through it. I know it's hard and difficult work. I'd point out to some of the comments with respect to the Christmas Tree Hill issues, I don't think we have any authority to, to change the calculation with respect to interior units. In other words, determining what percent of additional units would be allowable based on calculating the number, for example, interior units that are already being developed or in process. I think that's something which is probably outside our ability to regulate, so although we might conceptually agree with you, I don't think it's possible to go that extra step. On the other hand, there are some limitations, like the five-year thing and other standards, I don't know, limitations which are applied here appropriately, in particular to Christmas Tree Hill, and I'm, I'm in favor of them as well. I'm not, sorry, not quite done. So with the claresterie thing, if I'm pronouncing that word correctly, I understand the issue, I think, as clearly as I can. Let me just give a little bit of perspective to my brothers on the council here. Being on the planning commission for, I don't know, six-plus years, privacy is an issue which our people become animated about on a somewhat regular basis when development happens around. And I understand that because none of us like to have people staring down at us. My own sense is that if we can objectively add a development standard, which is not challengeable based on the subjectivity of the regulation, it sounds like a rational thing. If in fact, for example, Len's client wanted to do something that had, you know, clearer windows that looked out, I think that those are still allowable, they're just not by right. They would require some kind of application or permission. Am I right? I don't know if I'm right on that, Adam, but for sure, if somebody wants to add an addition to their home, which does not, which is not by right, it's not like they can't do it, they just have to get permissions and they have to... They would require some kind of application or permission. Am I right? I don't know if I'm right on that, Adam, but for sure, if somebody wants to add in addition to their home, which does not, which is not by right, it's not like they can't do it, they just have to get permissions and they have to jump through more hoops. Is that correct?
So the, the prior version of the ordinance that went to the commission in, in October included a discretionary option for Claire Story windows.
Right.
Whereas if you wanted to install a window other than Claire Story, you could do so either through a discretionary design review process or by obtaining the approval of the adjacent property owner. And as, and as part of the discussion at the Planning Commission meeting, that was removed from the ordinance.
Okay. I, I, I actually defer a little bit to the Planning Commission on their review and that. I, they considered it at some length, but I, I understand and thank you for the clarification. Adam, were you trying to say something there?
No, it, just that, I think sometimes if you want to exceed the regulations as well, it, it, there's another thing, it will jump into the world of a variance, such as if you want to go above a height standard or requirement. And so typically, if there wasn't this written into the code that you have this discretionary design review option, you would apply for a variance to, based on, which may be difficult to actually make the findings for, but you would apply for variance to say why your property has special circumstances which those standards shouldn't apply.
Right. I mean, to me, the Planning Commission's function is to evaluate exceptions, so that seems like a somewhat appropriate way to go forward, but I, there's a larger issue here which I'm not sure people fully appreciate, which is that we in the town encountered a fairly dramatic debate some years ago when the Wind Cup product, uh, project was created because it was overlarge for the site and created all kinds of visual impacts and has caused an enormous hubbub in the town immediately surrounding it, although I think that has relaxed to some extent and people are warming up to it too a little bit. But the reason, one of the, one of the reasons why there was a problem is that our town was subject to what are called regional housing needs allocations. And they are a, a number of units allocated to our town as to all towns in the region and in fact the state, based on the determination that because of the growing population, we have to provide at least the capability to develop additional units. When our town gets assigned that number, we have to either actually, we have to comply with that allocation. And I think the standards change a little bit about whether we simply have to show that units are theoretically buildable or, and there's a proposal, I believe, now that we have to actually build them. Either way, adding units to our town through these ADUs or JADUs is something that satisfies the addition. And even if we are incapable of meeting the full requirement allocated to us by the state, the good faith compliance by things like passing an ordinance that makes it easier to have these extra units and then actually having people make use of it provides a basis by which we can defend our town against the view from others that we are not bearing our fair share of the population growth. It's not a view I share. I believe our town is largely built out and we simply don't have a lot of space to add additional units. However, that is not a, that is not a view shared, I think generally in the state. We are perceived, as I understand from our local senator, as a regional area where we are, I'm sorry, am I going on too late? We are perceived, we are perceived as an area where we, in an entitled way, simply want to keep out others from living amongst us because we like how perfect it is here. I do love how perfect it is here. It's not that I want to keep other people out, but it's, I think we're full. Nevertheless, that's an example of the sort of tension that I think we help alleviate by giving some weight to our argument. We're doing the best we can by, for example, passing easing ADU requirements, except for some sort of reasonable limitations that we're putting on it. I'm very sensitive to Mr. Simon's comments about his additional property. I think they're good stewards of the property and we like and respect your family and we hope that we can make it work out. I'm cautious about changing an ordinance that affects the capability throughout the town as to all properties. I have no real hesitation based on what I know, trying to help your specific property, so I'm unresolved. I will tell the two of you about how we connect those dots. We cannot pass a judgment on a project before us. On the other hand, I suspect that project would be favorably received by both the Planning Commission, I'm looking at you, Peter, and by the town council. On the other hand, if it's necessary to, go ahead, what do you say?
Well, it, it just won't be reviewed, right?
Right. So the, the concept is if, if we need to have some tiered system, I could be persuaded to do that as well. So those are all my comments.
Let me ask a question about 1,200-square-foot units. If somebody's already in the process and we have not actually passed this ordinance until second Tuesday, or second, second meeting-
Second meeting in January.
In January, is it grandfathered?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Sort of.
And how quickly can you get your plans together?
This is a, a, a sort of a difficult, challenging question. It's a good question and something that I think we've been sort of grappling with, given that we have our current ordinance, which is currently in effect. We have new state law, January 1st, 2020, and then we have our ordinance, which presumably will be adopted hopefully at some point thereafter in the next month or two. And so we're, you know, there is some language that, anyways, I guess, we view that, at this point anyways, that an application would have to be deemed complete. When it's deemed complete, um, that would be the point at which those regulations would sort of be vested, whatever those regulations are at that time. You know, obviously, there, there'd be more discussion about that internally, but I think that's a, a clear point at which other applications such as other state legislation points to that point in, in the completion and the process of reviewing an application, at which point regulations that are in place at that time are, you know, get carried forth and are grandfathered an, an application. So, that's the best answer I can give you. Obviously, for an application to be complete, it needs to be reviewed by staff, all the required information has to be submitted. And then, according to state law in, in effect, January 1st, from the date of completion, there would be 60 days for which, by which time the application would have to be approved or, or, you know, so.
Alright. I have a question first. So, are you saying let's go with this?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to address one other thing on the, the housing-
Are you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so. No, I completely agree with you, as usual. I just wanted to address one other thing on the regional housing issue is a real issue. It is a huge issue. And prior to Wind Cup, the town was involved in a lawsuit-
Right.
Uh, because they refused to comply with state law and the town lost the lawsuit and as a result, built the Paradise Drive complex. So this is a real issue and I think this is potentially something that will help us meet the housing needs that we're going to be required to meet because it is going, gonna go nowhere but up in the next allocation. And we're gonna have to figure out what to do and how to accommodate things in the town. But I would agree with you. I would, I think, rather than just defer to state, if we don't do this, we're deferring to state law, basically, right? I mean, that's what we're all coming to if we don't. So we can adopt this with some of the changes we talked about and then make further changes down the road, but in the meantime, we can at least get this in place and not defer to state law, which is what's gonna happen if we don't, right?
So can I have a list of the modifications we're planning on?
The only modifications, other than the ones proposed by staff in the report, to my mind, that we've discussed at any length is Mr. Simon's property and I don't have a clear sense where we're going with that. Are there other things we discussed that are different from the staff report? Maybe I'm missing it, Jim, you tell me.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to, okay, and Mr. Simon would be under discretionary review if you want to go up to 1,200 square feet?
I guess. I, I don't know. What do you, what do you even think about that? We all want to help Mr. Simon.
Right.
Um, my caution was, are we setting a precedent that's larger than Mr. Simon's property and if so, do we have a problem? Generally, I don't have any problem with just, with discretionary review by our staff. I think Adam and his people are excellent. On the other hand, you know, are there unintended consequences here? I don't know.
That's what I would like to avoid too, is I don't want, you know, a bunch of oversized units suddenly going up, because this is already gonna create, I think, more units, which we need. But I would agree, so I would again defer to staff. How would, what's the best way?
What's the quickest way we can help Mr. Simon without going big here? Or is the only way realistically to get it done is to, is to include a two-tiered thing within the proposed ordinance?
I think, given the fact that that's been something that's been considered in the past and that we've reviewed and felt comfortable with, I would either recommend doing that or the other option would be, uh, Mr. Simon has, you know, a thousand-square-foot unit, which is obviously maybe not facilitating his projects. I, I don't know the answer to that, not having spoken with him on that particular issue.
What do you guys want to do?
I can, I could go with a two-tier.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I could too.
How do we, how do we frame that so that the motion will be as framed by staff, but with the exception of the two-tier thing, and I don't know how to include that in the motion?
Modify.
I think we would, yep. It's actually-
Give it to the attorney.
Previously drafted.
Let's have the attorney make the motion on this.
I'm sorry. And with the Claire Story window, that is basically a non-bedroom wall.
Hang on. Jesus. Hang on, am I missing anything? Here. 080.
So this is A.
This is the new B?
I'm gonna add a B.
Okay.
This becomes C.
Okay.
And here's what you're gonna read right there with the changes that are-
Alright, I'm sure if I can screw this up, I will, but let me make a, uh, motion. I'm gonna move that we, um, introduce ordinance number 992 to repeal and replace chapter 18.31 regarding accessory dwelling units and amend chapters 18.04 definitions, 18.18 special purpose overlay district and 18.20 off-street parking and loading related to accessory dwelling unit regulations, and approve resolution number 51/2019 to amend the town of Corder Madera fee schedule with one modification to the proposed ordinance that appears at 18.31.080. What is currently sub-B becomes sub-C and then sub-C becomes sub-D and we're adding a new sub-B. The new sub-B to that section reads as follows. ADUs may exceed the above maximum unit sizes following submission of an application and approval of a discretionary design review application by the Planning Commission. In no case shall the ADU exceed 1,200 square feet of gross floor area.
Good luck in God's words.
Can you repeat that?
Nope.
Uh, I'll second.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart recused. Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman recused. Mayor Andrews.
Yes, but when are you gonna tell me when the, when the roads are gonna be reviewed for access?
Well, first off, the motion passed.
Why don't you put it on it when we go to the agenda thing? We asked to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, put it on the next agenda. Okay. Alright, next thing up.
Smokes.
6A.
We're bringing back some council members.
Yeah, we should probably have David here. 6A, discussion and direction to staff regarding formation of and recruitment for a committee with a focus on sustainability and climate adaption issues. Okay.
Did you guys have fun?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I want to, um, give credit to Lorena Barrera, our administrative analyst, and Rebecca Vaughn, our town clerk and assistant town manager, for putting the staff report together on short notice. This has been a, I think the background speaks for itself, so I won't read it to you, but I, I will point out to two really key points. Our Climate Adaptation Plan and our Climate Action Plan are really key documents that set the stage for our, our town as we move forward. And as stated in the previous agenda item, we're susceptible to flood and fire and earthquake and every other natural disaster known to mankind. So, um, I think this is, this is an important point in the legacy of our town and the leadership now of setting others up for success. And with that, we have a couple of council members that have really taken a passion towards this type of concept. We really don't have a sustainability committee. We have a lot of boards and commissions and committees, but nothing really that speaks to sustainability. And so, our Vice Mayor Beckman and Councilmember Kuhnhart have been working with staff on some concepts. We talked about a model similar to what Sausalito does, but after a lot of discussion, I think, really where staff lands, and I'll, and I'll push this to the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Kuhnhart if they want to jump in. But really, to start with something that we can, that doesn't have hurdles and really we can just start now. And it's, it's something similar to what we did with the Finance Committee a couple of years ago. We had two council members that were passionate about finance, that understood that we needed to do something and worked with staff and it developed into what it is today. And so that's what, that's my recommendation, I think, before you is to appoint two council members, work with staff. This committee, you don't have staff necessarily assigned to it for agendas and staff time. What you would have is you'd have your town manager that would work with those council members. We would submit, um, we would recruit and review applications and interview community members and we'd form a, a committee. And, and so that's what we would do and as we, you know, evaluated some similar resolutions that have gone before council in the past, it would, I see it going before this committee. As we need expertise of our planners from Public Works, we would bring them in and, and we would coordinate with the committee. And I also see this committee as a, an opportunity for us as we start to go through all the processes that we're doing to help us educate our community. And so, this currently doesn't have a fiscal impact to our budget, but I will tell you that I do see it a big education component to this committee as we go forward to support us. And so we will ask for some funding from the council as we move forward, but, um, I'm, I'm actually excited about this and I think it would be a good step. How I see this as it progresses into next year, as we start to come to completion with some of our, um, our research, possibly connecting the Sustainability Committee into, or whatever we want to call it, I'm just saying sustainability at this point, but maybe merging it into one of the other boards. But there's been some discussion about the Flood, the Flood Board for a variety of reasons, but again, that's something I would see staff working with the council members and the committee on what that would look like and coming back to you at a later date of some recommendations. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and, and again, again, Councilmember Kuhnhart and Vice Mayor Beckman have been very involved and if there's anything else you would like to add to that.
Could I, could I?
Go ahead.
Yeah, please. Thank you very much. Uh, this moment has finally come. And I, there are just a couple of very quick things that I wanted to point out. There was a slight slip in the preparation of the agenda from the announcement of this being on our agenda last time when it was phrased as a Sustainability and, and Climate Mitigation Committee. The word adaptation snuck in here and obviously we have a, a climate adaptation planning effort that's already underway with respect to sea level rise and dealing with our hillsides. This, uh, the focus of this, as, as I see it, really is on taking those steps that help us reduce the causes of climate change. Taking those remaining steps that we can mitigate the, the problem, not just adapt and respond. This is, uh, this is offense, not defense. And, um, and I also just wanted to emphasize something that you got to, which is that, um, as we have discussed this with staff over the last couple of months, what's needed right now mostly is reaching out to the public and bringing the public in. And we have some great talent in the, in the town. And I hope that we can, um, enhance that communication and that two-way communication and involvement, engagement of folks from the town. So I look forward to hearing what, um, any visitors to, here may have to say and, um, I think we're, I'm ready to hear.
Yeah, no questions.
Public comment? And you're just looking for direction from us, right? Okay, thanks. Okay.
I move them.
You have public comment?
Oh, public comment, please.
Hello, my name is Sarah Goody. I am a 14-year-old climate activist and have been a resident of Corder Madera for 11 years and I am a freshman at Redwood High School. I have been striking for global climate action during and after school for the past 25 weeks. I also work with several organizations, including Sunrise Marin, Green Change, Earth Uprising International, Greening Forward, and Youth Versus Apocalypse. Uprising International, Greening Forward, and Youth vs. Apocalypse. I am also the founder of a local organization called Climate Now, which works to empower youth in Marin to take climate action in their community. We actually joined you in the Fourth of July parade this summer. First, I would like to acknowledge the town's recognition of the climate crisis. Thank you for your adoption of a climate action plan last year and for setting up this committee. Today, I would like to address what is missing: public discussion, debate, and urgency. The town of Corder Madera needs to make the climate crisis a top priority in the public eye through three actions. One, pass a climate emergency resolution. Two, help us hold a public town hall. And three, add a youth representative to the climate action committee. First, we need to adopt a climate emergency declaration to address climate change with the urgency it requires. Emergency declarations have been passed by hundreds of towns, including the town of Fairfax and the city of San Francisco. This declaration will state that the town will draw out a comprehensive plan that will entail how the town of Corder Madera will mitigate the climate crisis. Second, we need a town hall on climate change led by youth. A town hall would provide the public with the opportunity to learn more about climate change and would allow youth to share their stories and their voice. Third, we need to include a youth representative for the new climate action committee. My generation has the most at risk. I am scared, no terrified, because this is our future that we are talking about and I believe we should have a say in how it plays out. The time is now to take action on climate change. This is your chance to prove to me that my generation means something to you. Thank you very much for this opportunity to comment.
My name's James Bill. I'm a, live in adjacent town of Larksburg. I'm an architect that's focused on deep sustainability. And I'm here really as an old geezer and I feel like we failed our youth, you know? And, you know, people like Sarah and everybody, I love that they're stepping up to the plate and, and I, my goal is to facilitate them and to also encourage, you know, us old geezers to take deeper and stronger action to mitigate some of the things that we've allowed to happen. So, I appreciate that you've set up this climate action plan and committee and that you're moving forward in that realm. I also think it's along that line. It's important to, you know, what I want to encourage is sort of depth and speed, you know, to be, be more stronger. So, some of those things would be to, you know, to, as Sarah suggested, to adopt, to adopt a climate emergency resolution, as all these other towns have done. And that really sets a stage for the whole town to be, you know, to, to have it be something that we can, you know, that can get behind and encourage people to take action. We're planning to lobby other cities in, in Marin to do such things beyond Corder Madera. I also would like to encourage that the, that you devote actual staff and money to this. You know, it's great to have a committee, but it's really going to go faster and deeper if we can get, you know, cash and, 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 you know, people who are focused on it. And, you know, as we get into specific, you know, actions, there are things like, you know, increasing the EVs of the town. I mean, I think that the town needs to set an example for, for the people living in the town to take action that is lowering your carbon footprint, you know, whether it's EVs, whether it's, you know, going all-electric, reducing your dependence on natural gas, you know, and things like adding more PV or holding citizens' events to promote what citizens can do for, for their own actions so that we can bring the whole town together behind this and that the town will lead by its example. So, I speak for a lot of organizations that I participate in. They're all over the place. And we're here to help people wake up to the direness of the situation and to take the impact, take up the impacts that they have on, that they, that they're, you know, participating in. And, yeah, so, my partner and I have done a lot of what we're talking about. We've gone all-electric. We're.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, EVs, increased our solar PV, so.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. Counsel comment?
So, go ahead. Do you want to go first?
No, go ahead.
So, first of all, I want to thank, and I'm sure all five of us want to thank Ms. Goody, as well as our other commentator, for presenting. We were all encouraged that people are invested. Also, if you, some personal suggestions are that your specific requests are very well-received. My own observation over the years has been that when somebody from the public not only has sort of an impassioned view but provides explicit and specific things that they're asking for, it's much easier to award that with the action that they're asking for. I might go further and suggest to you that if the committee gets formed, which I have an extremely strong confidence it will, that you submit yourself to be a part of that and that you prepare and submit to the committee your proposed emergency declaration. By the way, as a comment there, you might not want to reference Fairfax and San Francisco as the two places that have done it. Next time, you might generally refer to other Bay Area communities as having done so.
This is a jealous member of the council.
You may, you may also want to propose very specific actions that the committee could take. For example, adopt a mission. Describe what educational activities could be performed for whom and when. Describe the application of staff and so forth. Those specific sort of mechanical details, to my, to my mind, are the way that things actually get done. And the sort of impassioned proselytizing might make some people in a large crowd feel good. They don't accomplish the sorts of things I think you may have done here tonight, so good on you. It seems so non-controversial to me, guys. Don't we just direct staff to do this thing, right?
Absolutely.
I would think so.
Yep.
So, with the requested action, the way it was agendized, we're just, we're asking, it sounds like you answered the first question and then the appointment of two members and we'll bring this back to you on the consent calendar.
Elaine David, of course.
Just wanted to have a further opinion. Okay. Thank you. Simon, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. So, there's town manager and council reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a couple of quick, as it's that time of year. And so, we do have our Chamber of Commerce Holiday Mixer at the Corder Madera Inn at 5:30 on December 12th. And we also have our town band holiday concert party on December 13th at 7:30. And also, the deadline to submit paperwork to run for town councils, December 13th, right?
December 16th.
December, but it's extended to December 13th? Oh, December 11th. I think I'd have my town clerk here. Okay. So, December 11th. To date, we've received paperwork, completed paperwork for, from two residents. One is Fred Cassisa and the other is Charles Lee. Fred is on our Parks and Rec Commission and Charles is on our planning commission. So, today we've received paperwork from two. And that is on our town website as well. Thank you. This is town clerk. That's all I have.
All right. Any other council reports?
Couple of quick things. I, this is an FYI and following up on something that I mentioned last time. I met with the leaders of the Larksburg Corder Madera School District staff to discuss the practicalities and economics of adding batteries to the three school solar systems that they have already, obviously on a pro bono basis. And they are pursuing other expertise, both economic and engineering, to potentially do that. TAM, there was an ad hoc committee formed of TAM to review the Highway 101 I-580 interconnection in the future. Then you may have heard, seen that the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge westbound bike ped lane was opened up and thousands of bicycles used it on the first weekend. Thousands.
David, is it, is it the idea is going to be one going the other way as well or it's just one lane that goes both ways?
Yes. And follow-up connections. And there were a lot of, lot of discussion and, and action on connections on the west side, which have at current not safe and making those safe connections into the roadways over here. And there was an extensive effort to set out a list of the large long-range transportation projects that potentially would be appropriate to fit in the new regional faster funding scheme, should it come to life? Should it come to life?
That's not like $110 million?
Billion. You missed the B.
Oh, billion, sorry.
Missed the B. And that's it from me.
No, I have Ross Valley Paramedic Authority and Marin Clean Energy coming up, but I don't have any reports as of now.
The wildfire Marin group, which I've been working with, which the Board of Supervisors approved putting the tax on the March 2020 ballot and we are trying to raise $250,000 to advise the public about what this actually is. And all the results we have from polling show that if people are properly informed, they will vote for it by a margin of about 70%. This is the 10-cent-a-foot tax to raise money that would go for wildfire prevention, most of which is used for vegetation management. One of the things I have been asked to do is to ask my fellow councilmembers for donations. I'm talking to town businesses, so I'm going to do that in public, so I'm not violating any kind of Brown Act violation. I should have talked to the town attorney beforehand. Sorry about this. Am I doing this right? I think I am.
Contributions to what?
And I will have Rebecca send out the information, but if you have money left in, you know, election fund or something, but we're asking for donations from all town councilmembers also who are supporting this. So, I wanted to make a public announcement about that rather than just send an email to everybody asking for it individually.
But does a majority vote get it done or do you need two-thirds?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds. And I'm working with the village, the town center, you know, and some of the prominent town businesses trying to get donations to advertise this also because, again, if we get the message out, it will pass. And as you know, I think this is something that we really, really need in the county. Okay. That's it. Thanks.
Two super quick items. I had the Chamber of Commerce meeting today. As Todd said, they've got their Holiday Mixer coming up on December 12th at the Corder Madera Inn. And then they're going to be coming to us at our next meeting with their budget and the big kind of change is that they're looking to hire an assistant for Julie because, as you guys know, she works her tail off. So, so that's kind of the big change to their budget for the coming year. And then I checked in, so I'm the council liaison to the school board. I checked in with my counterpart on the school board and all is well.
All the students are above average?
I, I certainly hope so.
Okay. All right. Review draft agenda for the next meeting?
Jim, I don't have any comments about the agenda for next meeting, but do you want to ask staff to agendize for some future meeting issues related to access or ingress and egress for, for our hilly communities?
Yeah, and I prefer it for December, but depends on how quickly you can pull it together.
I'm not sure for the next meeting, but we'll definitely, we know it's urgent and it needs to get back to you. We can talk about it. The staff was actually contemplating, due to lack of quorum issues or items, quorum items, lack of agenda items, we may, just because of where staff is right now, we may cancel this meeting. Unless you feel strongly about.
How can I go through the holiday season without seeing you again? I couldn't do that.
Is there any chance that one of our fellow council members could get unrecused by the December meeting?
That's two weeks from now.
Right. And they can't turn around that quick. The fair political, whatever.
Opinion request, the minimum amount is about three weeks and I think, given the holidays, would be unlikely to even get three weeks. And that would assume that the opinion request went out immediately, meaning.
And the problem, the additional problem, as I understand it, is that when it's a judgment call, if you go ahead and say, okay, we're going to take the judgment that I could be unrecused and then they come back and answer afterwards, then that, that queers the whole thing. So, you'd have to start over.
Okay. So, do we even want to meet, meet on December 17?
Oh, that's right. Is Sloan going someplace?
No.
Oh, Bob's going somewhere. Oh, that's right.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, so move, so move to cancel, move, cancel the meeting. December, December meeting canceled, move.
Does that break anybody else's heart?
Second.
Okay. What?
I think we're receiving some pushback.
We're down there. I totally support my bosses.
Okay. Rebecca, no, honestly, be real now. Are we, are we going to screw something up if we just give them?
The chamber budget usually comes to you in December, but I'm fine pushing that.
At the meeting today, they were aware that, or I guess they saw it as a distinct possibility that the December meeting might be canceled.
And is it going to screw them up in some way?
They said, we'll bring it in December or January, depending on whether there's a meeting. So, yeah.
If they want their money, they'll come.
They'll be here.
Okay.
Good enough.
And we're going to move on to the next meeting. We've got to go to the sewer sanitaries.
We are now adjourned.